Hi traders, I am getting in my second daily walk today. I am trying to get anywhere between 1 and 2 30-minute daily walks in per day. I've been doing that lately and it feels good. Today, while I take my walk, I decided to talk to you very briefly about these. A dream of mine. These actually are my trading poker cards. They have been available to traders for quite a while now, maybe about a year and a half, and they have sold all over the world in three different languages. Now, these cards are specifically designed to give you a deep insight into my style of market play. Every single tactic, every single approach, for the most part, is detailed on one of these cards. Have been responsible for many traders, many traders elevating their trading. And I always had this dream to basically formulate my own specific set of cards that were designed to help traders understand what I do in the markets more thoroughly. Now traders, when I formulated these cards, I believed that having my method and card form was not actually enough. So what I decided to do was form a trading poker club. This is where the value of owning these cards come into play in a very big way. And so by having one deck of these cards, you are also a lifetime member in my trading poker club. That is a value that you receive for life. Now, what I've decided to do was to give you, those of you who are not part of this club yet, those of you who do not have my trading poker cards, I actually decided to give you a peek inside view into what we do during these monthly sessions. I want to give you an inside peek into how we go over things, how we look at each one of the cards. And I wanted to give each and every one of you an inside view into the value that each one of my trading poker club members receives month by month. You too can elevate your trading every single month of your life. All it takes is having this deck of trading cards, my trading poker cards. So without any further ado, whether you decide to become one of my trading poker club members or not, guys, I want you to enjoy this relatively extended educational session that I had last month with my trading poker club. Take a look. Alright, my trading poker club members. That's right, it's time for us to delve into another one of the concepts that actually are a part of your trading poker card deck. Of course, as you know, we take these sessions every single month. We pick a card in your trading poker card deck to delve deeply into so that you get the deepest of all understandings about what each one of those cards is attempting to communicate to you. Now, there are 50 some odd cards in the deck. These cards represent my trading concepts, my trading tactics, my trading strategies. They, for the most part, are complete. They're designed for you to take the concepts and build upon each one of them and eventually to provide you with a cohesive approach to short-term oriented trading in the markets. As you know, cards or flash cards have been used for a very, very long time for two basic purposes. They've been used as a source of making money in the form of a game like Blackjack, Poker, Uno. They've also historically been used as educational vehicles and tools that help break complex concepts down into simple components. They're extraordinarily effective and I'm very glad that you have my trading poker cards. Now, if you've been with us for a while, you'll understand how valuable these monthly sessions are. What's really amazing about your membership into the trading poker club is that we have a very special monthly study session every single month of your life. It never stops. This is not a feature or a benefit that has an expiration date that you can go on and grow every single month of your life through these study sessions. These study sessions are designed to fill the void that no book or no magazine or no deck of cards can actually completely accomplish. There are certain nuances that are behind each one of the concepts that a card or not even a book can actually delve into. And so it's the combination of each one of the cards in your trading poker card deck, what it's trying to communicate to you, your daily and weekly application of those concepts at these study sessions that in my opinion make this club membership priceless. So today, we've got another topic to delve into. And it's a topic that, in my opinion, falls at the foundation of proper trading. It's one of the foundational cornerstones of understanding how markets work. And just your grasp of what we're going to cover today is going to give you a really big jump in your trade selection and in your profit taking. So this concept is going to deal with actually three things. How to select your trades better? How to select some of the most powerful trades better? When to sit back and ride your profits out a bit more? It will help us do that and it will help us also know when it's time to think about taking our profits off the table. So this one concept is going to deal with all three of those things. Right now, what you see here is a two-minute chart of JPM. I'm going to start off with this chart. But before I delve into this chart of JPM, I have to give you a backdrop of what we're going to cover. I've got to give you an understanding of what I call the concept of igniting, continuation, and exhaustion. So, most of you are familiar with elephant bars. This is a very, very special card in your deck. It is the elephant bar card. I'll point to an elephant bar on JPM here. Now, elephant bars are very important because elephant bars represent an event that we take advantage of 60% of the time, which means that of all the trades we take, of all the events, of all the opportunities that present themselves to us as traders, elephant bars occur 60% of the time. So what I mean is that elephant bars will present themselves to you 60% of the time out of all of your trades. So if you trade 100 times, 60 of those times will, for the most part, be elephant bar plays. Now, why is the elephant bar so powerful? Why is the elephant bar so important? Because when you are dealing with stocks or items that are of high quality, if you're dealing with stocks that have institutional sponsorship, I'm not talking about penny stocks or stocks that no one really is largely interested in. I'm talking about stocks where institutions, hedge funds, pension funds, big players, are involved in the stock's activity every single day. That's a high-quality stock. And when you're dealing with high-quality stocks, in order to produce an elephant bar, it requires billions of dollars of commitment. You can't produce a bar in JPM like the one I'm pointing to now unless a variety of institutions have decided to hit the buy button and accumulate the stock at that moment, at the same time, with very powerful force. You see, elephant bars cannot be created by you and me, not in stocks of high quality. It takes billions of dollars to produce an elephant bar. It is one of the clearest signs that institutions right now are piling into the stock. If you have obviously a red elephant bar, a very solid red elephant bar, it is an indication that your institutions are starting to do some profit taking, starting to lighten up a bit for your heavy players, alright? And so these bars represent one of the clearest indications that the big money is at work right now. And that is why they're very important. However, traders, however, elephant bars are not created equal. All elephant bars are not created equal. And this is where today's concept comes in. We're going to delve into the three types of elephant bars. We're going to delve into variants of elephant bars that will help you judge which ones are more powerful. We're going to delve into types of elephant bars that tell you when to pile into a play, when to think about getting out of the play. When does an elephant bar tell you to relax and don't do anything? Just continue to enjoy your trade. Elephant bars have the power to do all three of those things, to tell us when to pile in, when to relax and let the trade play out, and also when to think about lightening up or getting out of your play. If there is one thing you need to master, it's elephant bars and all of its variants. And we're going to do that today. So the first type of elephant bar I want to explain to you is what I call the igniting elephant bar. Think about this, the igniting elephant bar. Now, I'm going to have to draw this for you so that you get a good understanding. Let's assume that a stock is not really experiencing any true or real momentum to the upside or downside. It's sort of just meandering around a bit, going up a few bars, going down a bar or two every now and then, but no real progress, no real momentum up or down. If out of this congestion, if out of this sideways movement, all of a sudden, boom, an elephant bar forms, this would be considered an igniting bar. Why is this elephant bar? Why is this sizable, solid green bar an igniting bar? Because it's igniting a brand-new direction in the stock. It's igniting a brand-new move. It's igniting a change in the characteristic of the stock. The stock was drifting sideways and the elephant bar, boom, ignited something new. Igniting elephant bars are bars that we pile into. Igniting elephant bars are very strong buy bars. Now, I always get the question, Oliver, do I buy into an igniting elephant bar? Or do I wait for the igniting elephant bar to finish and then buy after the igniting elephant bar? I like to buy into igniting elephant bars, but toward the end of the elephant bar's formation. So if this is a two-minute elephant bar, I like to buy in that 1 minute 40-second, 1 minute and 40-second range, 1 minute and 45-second range, just before the full two minutes is over. I need to make sure that I'm jumping into this elephant bar at a point during the two-minute timeframe where there's not enough time to change the nature of the igniting elephant bar. If I buy into the bar and it's only 15 seconds, yet there's a minute 45 seconds left in that bar, that's a lot of time to actually change this into something that's no longer an elephant bar. I need to jump into the bar when I know this is going to end pretty much the way it is right now. Now, if you can't jump into the bar because you didn't see it, jumping into the very next bar that clears the elephant bars high is also doable, acceptable. But I try to get into these elephant bars right before they finish. So if you look carefully, with this elephant bar in JPM, it qualifies as a clearing elephant bar because what was happening to the left was relatively a sideways movement. This elephant bar ignites a brand-new move and it does so right off of its 20-period simple moving average, which is also very beautiful. Let's continue with igniting elephant bars. That's not the only type of igniting elephant bar on the upside. You could have your stock moving down, bar by bar, like this. Red bar, red bar, red bar, and then, boom, this elephant bar, this green elephant bar is also considered an igniting elephant bar. Why? Remember what I've told you? If your elephant bar changes the character of what was happening to the left of it, it's an igniting bar. What was happening to the left of this elephant bar? A movement down. So the green elephant surge to the upside changes what was happening to the left. It changes the downward movement. It changes the direction. It changes the character or nature of the stock, making it also an igniting elephant bar. So you have the igniting elephant bar that is coming out of sort of like a sideways movement. Boom, and you have the elephant bar that changes the nature of a downward movement, okay? Now, we would call this an igniting elephant bar because what was happening to the left was more or less a sideways movement. This bar changes or ignites a brand-new move. What would you call this elef- this green elephant bar? Igniting? Would that be considered an igniting elephant bar as well? That's right, it's an igniting elephant bar as well because for the most part, what was happening to the left of it is a downward movement. Absolutely, okay. So elephant, igniting elephant bars change the nature of what was happening to the left of the elephant bar. I'm going to repeat that. Igniting elephant bars change the direction and the nature of what was happening for the most part to the left of the elephant bar. This red elephant bar here is an igniting elephant bar because what was happening to the left of it for the most part was a move to the upside. And this bar ignites a brand-new direction. It changes the flow. It changes the nature of what was happening to the left, alright? Now, let's talk about what I would call an exhaustion elephant bar. Very important. The exhaustion elephant bar is exactly the opposite of the igniting elephant bar. The exhaustion elephant bar ends a move. So an igniting elephant bar begins a brand-new move. An exhaustion elephant bar, most of the time, will signify that you are at or near the end of a move. This that I'm pointing to now is JPM's exhaustion elephant bar. Now, these exhaustion elephant bars don't necessarily mark the exact end, but are indications that you could be at the end or near the end of the move. Now, let's go over how you can identify what an exhaustion elephant bar is. First of all, its origin is usually separated a pretty big distance away from the 20-period moving average. This blue line is the 20-period simple moving average, okay? Now, look at the origin of the bar. Where the elephant bar starts, it's separated. Now, look at the origin of the igniting bar, very different. It's at or near the 20-period moving average, okay? So one characteristic of your exhaustion bar is that it begins its life elevated well above the 20-period moving average. Also, what happened to the left of this elephant bar? A fairly decent move to the upside. So exhaustion bars expand what was happening to the left. Igniting bars change what was happening to the left. Exhaustion bars stretch what was happening to the left, increase what was happening to the left, expand what was happening to the left, to the left. It exhausts what was happening to the left. So let me demonstrate this this way. If you have a green bar up, a green bar up, a green bar up, a green bar up, and then an elephant bar, boom, this would be considered an exhaustion bar because it is expanding or continuing what was happening to the left of it, stretching what was happening to the left of it, exacerbating what was happening to the left of it, increasing what was happening to the left of it. So your igniting bar changes what was happening to the left of it. Exhaustion bars stretch or extend what was happening to the left of it. And they also tend to have an origin point that is far from the 20, an origin point that is far from the 20. Make sure you understand this. Let's look at this scenario in the opposite color. What kind of bar, elephant bar, is this one here? Igniting or exhaustion? That's igniting, that's right. It is changing, for the most part, the direction of what was, the direction that was happening to the left of it. What about this one? What about that elephant bar? Exhaustion, that's right, you've got it, I love it. This extends what was happening to the left and the origin point is, is far from the 20 or had is, the origin point is pretty wide away from the 20, alright? Why is this not necessarily an exhaustion bar? Why is this one not necessarily an exhaustion bar? Why? Too close to the 20-period moving average. Excellent, there you go, my babies, goo goo ga ga, you've got it, I love it, I love it. So if we just take a look at this small window here of JPM's activity late Friday, you should now be able to quickly say, boom, igniting elephant bar, that's a buy. Boom, exhaustion elephant bar, that's a sell. Boom, igniting elephant bar to the downside, we're going to drop a bit now. Boom, exhaustion bar, we should be at or near the end. Boom, igniting bar changes the nature of what was happening to the left. We have good odds of the stock turning back to the upside. It had a little hiccup here, but that's exactly what it did, right into the close. That is very powerful, traders. The ability to grab igniting, to be able to identify igniting elephants and exhaustion elephant bars will up your trading game. Do you know how many people, how many traders make the mistake of buying this strength? When you know that after being so far up, after an igniting, after having an elephant bar with its origin away from the 20, after stretching or extending what was happening to the left, that this is overbought, it is not a point at which you commit new money. The numbers of traders that make this mistake are, that number, the numbers are big, but never you again, never you again. Now, you'll always be able to point to an exception, traders. You'll always be able to point to an exhaustion bar that actually continues higher. Remember, nothing's 100%. Don't focus on the exceptions, focus on what happens most of the time. A lot of traders fall into this trap. I teach them something that has an 85% accuracy rate, which means that 8.5 times out of every 10 times, you're going to see it happen the way I taught you. But traders yet want to point out the one time that that didn't, or the 1.5 ti- times out of 10, it didn't. Oliver, what about this exception? What about that? It's the 1.5 times out of 10. Why are you going to major in minor things? We're focused on what happens 8.5 times out of every 10 here. And we make our money off of probabilities, right? This is high probability. 85 ti- 85% of the time, we're going to be right with this concept. And that's all we need is high probability. Alright, let's take a look at, now let's see, let's take a look at MU, that's a popular stock. What would you say this elephant bar is? Alright, excellent, igniting, of course. It's changing the nature of what was happening to the left of it. That's not continuing what was happening to the left of it. That's not stretching or exhausting what was happening to the left. That's a change in the whole nature of the stock. Boom, that's an igniting elephant bar. Now, this is a perfect segue to move into the third type of elephant bar for you. You know the igniting, you know the exhaustion elephant bar, but there's a third one called the continuation elephant bar. And what you have here is what I would term the continuation elephant bar. The continuation elephant bar happens after the igniting elephant bar at times, but it doesn't happen too far separated from the initial igniting elephant bar. This is very key, traders. Let me repeat it to you again. The continuation elephant bar happens after the igniting elephant bar, but not too far after, not too distant away from the igniting elephant bar. You can have some separation, but the separation is not ridiculous separation. And the continuation elephant bar happens not that far away from your igniting elephant bar. So you need, it's somewhat subjective, but you need to be able to generally determine whether or not this elephant bar is happening just a couple of bars after the igniting or is it happening after many bars after the igniting? Just a few bars in between your igniting and your next elephant bar will make this a continuation bar. You don't want to sell continuation bars. They are a strong indication that your move is going to continue. That's why I've labeled it a continuation elephant bar. Continuation elephant bars say, stay put, sit tight, relax, sip on your coffee, there's more gains to come. Do you understand this? Do you understand the difference between igniting, continuation, and exhaustion now? Alright, very nice. Let's go back to an earlier period in MU. You name that elephant, alright? Elephants have three names. You name that elephant. Boom, alright, this is an igniting. Now, see, some people are saying continuation. I can see in a way what you're getting at, but no, this is not a continuation. This is an igniting. This bar is changing the entire nature of what is immediately to the left. It's changing the nature of it, right? It's changing the nature of the stock or what the stock or what the stock was doing to the left of it. Boom. Okay? Look. Changing the nature of what was happening to the immediate left of it. What would you call this bar? Igniting, okay? Beautiful. What about this elephant bar? Exhaustion, absolutely. After it's extending what was happening to the left and the origin is far away from the twenty period moving average. Excellent, excellent. What about this green bar here? This green elephant bar? Which one is that? Continuation, I love it. You guys have got this. Not too far from the origin. Not too far from the origin. Beautiful, beautiful. Let's see what happened before. Okay, this is a nice one. Okay. What is this red elephant bar? Look to the immediate left. Igniting, see, igniting. It's changing what's immediately to the left. Excellent. What would you call this green elephant bar? Igniting? Beautiful. What would you call this green elephant bar? Continuation? All right? Beautiful. Do we sell continuation bars? Green continuation bars? No. We sit back and ride them out for more. You guys have got this. Let's take a look at another one. All right? Boom. What would you call that one? Igniting? Excellent. All right, cool. I like it. That's changing what was happening to the immediate left. What would you call this elephant bar? Be careful. Ah, that's right, you guys have got this. Continuation. I love it. Guys, you can have, listen to me carefully. You can have a continuation elephant bar without an igniting elephant bar. You don't need it. All right? I, I need to make that distinction. Because I think I explained to you that a continuation bar doesn't happen that far away from an igniting elephant bar. That's true. But what if the beginning of the move did not start with an elephant bar? You can still have a continuation elephant bar. So if you don't consider this an elephant bar that started the move, this is still a continuation elephant bar. It doesn't need an igniting elephant bar before it to be a continuation elephant bar. So just understand that. All right? All right, beautiful. Now, guys, I, I want to point out this bar and this one. Now, this one can be construed as an igniting bar, but let me give you a little nuance here. For me, the best igniting bars take out at least two of their opposite color. So look at the difference here. This, oh, this bar has one red bar before it, two red bars before it, but it only takes out one. Whereas that this one takes out one, two, three. You can ignore the tail up here a little bit. So it's kind of taking out a bigger chunk of the opposite color. Do you see that? It's taking out a bigger chunk of what was happening to the left. This is all what's happening to the left. Whereas that this is not taking out as big of a chunk. I like to, I like to see my igniting bars really take out a solid chunk of what was happening to the left. And if it's red bars, I like to see my igniting green bars take out at least two of the red bars that's to the left of it. So just keep that little nuance in mind. It'll help you qualify the very best igniting ones from the okay ones. All right? Okay? Red elephant bar here. Which one? Igniting, continuation, or exhaustion? Igniting elephant bar, excellent. Okay? Which one is this one? This green elephant bar? Continuation, beautiful. What about this green elephant bar? Igniting, beautiful. What about this green elephant bar? Boom. I love it. Congratulations traders. You're all elephant bar experts now. But we're not done. We're going to take a look at a few more here. There's a few more. Want to make sure that we are pure in our understanding. What kind of elephant bar is this one? That's right, you're elephant hunters now. Igniting, beautiful. Okay, this elephant bar? Igniting or continuation? I'll accept both of them there. I'll accept both of them there. Beautiful. Okay, I love it, I love it. Okay. This one? Igniting? Right? Changes what's happening to the left. Excellent, beautiful. You guys, I think you've got this. Let's take a look at Amazon. Let's go up to the $3,000 price area. Amazon's $3,000. All right? If you had to call that one of them, which one would it be? Exhaustion. There you go, right? All right? And basically after exhaustion, this stock has to rest a little bit. Usually comes down or rests. Okay? Now, this elephant bar. Beautiful. You guys have got this, igniting. Which one here? Continuation? My God, you're reading these things like pros. This one? Oh, my God. Oh, my God. I created masters. Woo! All right? What about this elephant bar and beyond? Okay? What about this one? I love it. This one? Igniting? Beautiful. This one? Continuation, not far from the twenty. Beautiful! Wow! 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 Okay? This one? Exhaustion. Tenuous and far. Okay? This one? Igniting, beautiful! My God, you guys are all over this now. All right. You can take a look at, shoot, take a look at, yes. Red elephant bar. Igniting, changes what happened to the left. Igniting! Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. All right. I love it. Now, they don't all work, guys. Please, I don't want to give you that false idea that this is 100%. There is nothing in existence that is 100%, understand that. All right? We have an igniting elephant bar here that's failed. It's not 100%. This is what stops are for. We would not need protective stops if there were something that was 100% accurate. We can't get that. But we can get 80%. We can get 85% accurate. We protect ourselves on the 15% that don't work. But you can make a frickin' fortune with high probability like that. Twitter. Red elephant bar. Igniting. All right? Look at this one. Red elephant bar. All right? What about this one? Excellent, excellent. Igniting? Continuation? Some would call this continuation. Some would call it igniting because it's green to the left of it. I'll accept both in that case. I have taught it both ways. All right? What about this elephant bar? I know you know this, it's now getting boring, but in a good way. Igniting? What about this one? Igniting? You've got two igniting bars back to back. What do you think that's telling you? Oh, my God. Just pour your money in. Continuation? All right? Traders, congratulations. You are now elephant bar experts. You now know how to identify the three main types of elephant bars, which this understanding is going to elevate your opportunity spotting skills. It's going to solidify your putting, putting money into quality elephant bar plays. It's going to also increase your ability to know when not to get overly excited with a move up and sit back and relax. Continuation bar? Sit back and relax. That continuation bar has given you more profits, but relax, don't make any moves. It's going to increase your ability to know when to get out despite the fact that your stock is still performing well. Exhaustion bars. It's going to make you more accurate with knowing when the nature of a trend or a move has changed. It's going to increase and improve your overall masterful trading, or it's going to increase and improve your trading overall. But you have to go out and apply this. You've got to work at it. You've got to make it yours. How do you do this? Starting tomorrow, Monday. Make it your business to identify these three types of elephant bars. Take a chart every now and then and identify the ele- the, the ignitings. Identify the continuations. Identify the exhaustion bars. Do it regularly throughout the week. Every single week, until this understanding, this knowledge stops being my knowledge and starts being your knowledge. You see, you can't trade successfully if it's still mine. It has to become yours. How does this knowledge that I just shared with you become yours? It's not yours right away. It's yours right now intellectually, but you have to make it yours actually. So the way you transfer it from your intellect into your heart, into every fiber of your being, you do that through use. It is through frequent use that you make something yours. It is through frequent use that you master something. So go to work traders. Go to work. Boom!